Thank you. All right, this time we'll go into public comments. We have one person sign up to speak. I'm Stephanie York.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie York. I'm a teacher at Bailey Elementary School. I currently teach kindergarten and have been with the district for 12 years. I'm attending this meeting and speaking up about concerns I have in regards to the two e-learning days that we have to complete every week. When I first went into education, I always said, I will never get into the politics of education. I will stick to the four walls of my classroom and just worry about what happens in my classroom. Boy, was I so naive. I understand the situation our district is facing. When it was mentioned in the spring of last year that we were expected to do two days of e-learning, I told my husband, well, this is it. I'm going to have to leave the district that I am in. It was my husband who told me that I should really tough it out and wait and see because he knew how much I loved it here and how much I would regret my decision. So, just as we do with family, we stick it out the tough times and we try to push it through. I love working with the families of the city and I love working with their kids. So I just said, we have to get over this little bump. I'm just very curious though as to why the teachers were not asked about recommendations for what we could do to help for this upcoming school year. Then when suggestions were brought up, we were told the deadline has passed and we can't submit a change. What was the timeframe and why couldn't the teachers, families, administration for the Lake Station families have an open forum to discuss these concerns and see if we could reach a resolution? There are so many conversations we could have had to discuss possible solutions to make this easier on the families, teachers, and most importantly, the kids. I also want to mention the number of hours that these children are required by the state of Indiana to sit in front of a computer. I made the comment to another teacher that we would be livid if we heard a parent say, yes, I allow my kid to watch TV for seven hours or play on their iPad for six hours. We would be so mad about that. It is hard as a teacher to keep fifteen five-year-olds engaged and actively listening and participating through a computer for that length of time. I can't control the events that are taking place in their home and I can't monitor their level of understanding or provide feedback the way a five-year-old needs to hear it. It doesn't matter how many breaks I give them and trust me, I give them a lot of breaks. These kids are not motivated to learn through a screen. I am the first experience of school for most of these kids and they are already hating school. I have parents telling me they are crying when we come back from lunch because they just want to be in school. How am I supposed to explain that to a five-year-old that this is what school's supposed to be like for two days a week? Please, I encourage one of you to come to my classroom and explain this to them because I can't. This isn't what school is meant to me to be. We learned from COVID that virtual learning is not effective. I mean, you all are grown adults and you're sitting on a board and you're expected to listen to me for three minutes. Do you remember every word I said? Can you recite anything, word for word, what I said? I don't mean that to be disrespectful. I'm just really trying to make this an eye-opening experience for you guys. I really hope that in November, the referendum passes for the sake of our Lake Station kids. The teachers of Lake Station are being made to feel like constant failures since we are unable to reach our students like we would in a regular setting. They deserve better than this because I sincerely can't keep doing it through a computer screen. Thank you.
I understand it's a little unorthodox to respond to the public comments right away like this, but I would like to take this opportunity to respond. First of all, thank you so much for coming tonight and for sharing your comments. Secondly, I understand. Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course. So naturally, this is not what we want to be doing for our children. Some of the decisions that were made for it are in part because we had to give a certain amount of notice before we could cancel transportation.
Yeah, why was that for them in February of two thousand and three?
Because there had to be a two-year notice before we could cancel transportation. And with, just to be on the safe side, if the referendum were not to be continued, we had to put that in place then. Financially speaking. I understand that. Ma'am, it sounds like your concern is more towards the state than us. Listen. Well, ma'am. And if I can. Yes, and if I can, if I can finish explaining, I'll. No, it doesn't. But what I wanted to explain is that in case the referendum failed, in case we couldn't get it to continue, we had to put that notice in place two years ago. Because otherwise, the alternative would be to have waited until November of last year to see if the referendum passed and then start the notice now, which then would mean that we would be legally required to provide transportation with no funding to do so. The, the meeting.
It was a public meeting and publicly posted, ma'am.
I understand your frustration. Believe me, I don't. I, I don't want to, we don't want to make these types of decisions. I have, I have three kids in the schools myself that take. I, I have three kids in the schools that take the bus. This is not what I want to be doing.
Okay, i- i- if I could interrupt for just a minute, this really isn't not meant to be a question and answer session. And, you know, we're happy to respond to some of these things, but the bottom line is this. Every month, we have meetings. We've had meetings for as long as I have been representing this, this board and long before that, once a month at a minimum. Since COVID, these meetings have been broadcast online to where if you are working, you can watch them at a time that's, that you're available. We are required to give the public information and how we do it is through these meetings. We've, this was something that was voted on two years ago in a public meeting. That meeting was broadcast. You know, this has been something that has been discussed, meeting after meeting after meeting, in the financial meetings that we have. So, you know, it's unfortunate that some members of the community are saying we didn't know. We're trying to let you know and how we let you know is through these meetings. And we're giving you every opportunity to see the meetings. You can watch the meeting in the middle of the night if that's what your schedule allows.
Well, I, I under, no, and I completely, and I completely understand that, but what I also want to point out is that we didn't just vote on it two years ago and never talk about it again. We, we. If you don't mind, I just, I just want to explain a couple of things just to give a better understanding of what's going on a little bit too. So, part of the reason for the change to e-learning also and not just allowing the kids in the school building five days a week regardless of our transportation situation currently is that requirement for the two-year notice. So, if we were to allow kids into the schools five days a week or if we required it, we would be breaching that notice. So that is the reason for the, the e-learning because we can't require kids to be in school five days a week but not provide transportation. No, we did not. No, we did not.
That is not, ma'am, that is not what he said.
You're not understanding.
And you know.
We, we gave the notice for cutting transportation two years ago as the law requires. The decision to change to the two days of e-learning was just made recently in the last few months here while we, you know, were trying to figure out what we could do with the money that we have available and with what remaining referendum funds we have until the end of the year because starting next year, we have no referendum funds. And that's why we made the cut so that we can afford to provide that transportation through February where we won't have referendum money to do so. No, we did not.
No, we had a, we, we.
It gets spent every year to operate the schools. There's no, there's no savings account. There's no extra money. It all gets spent on. Transportation is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Is that?
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand dollars a year. The referendum brings in roughly one point three million. So, the referendum money, it's not broken up this way. We had to budget it out. There's a whole plan for it that we have to present for how the, the funds are used each year. But just to lay it out here in a way that I think is easy to understand is that almost the entire referendum money is used up. It could be used up by transportation and NIPS go alone. So, when we lose a million and a half dollars almost and we have to figure out what we need to do, that's, that's where the difficult decisions come in. So come February, when we can cut transportation entirely, if the referendum does not pass, children will be back in school five days a week.
With no transportation.
If it doesn't pass, we will cut transportation in February entirely for our general education students, but the kids will be in school five days a week at that time. Well. Hopefully, in November. And I, and I'll be happy to help you out with that too. And, and we do have. Well, and we do.
You can't do that to the children.
Yeah, and, right. And, and this is why I encourage you all, whether you're sitting here today or whether you're listening online or going to watch it at another time, to, to watch these meetings, come to the meetings, be informed. Because if you are not informing yourself or if, if you are not allowing yourself to take in the information that we are giving within the parameters that we're allowed to give it because we cannot give it home in the bookbag. The school, the state law doesn't allow that. We have parameters, things that we can do. We're going to have meetings coming, special meetings in September, special meetings in October, a few different times. We'll advertise those. You can come. They'll be broadcast online. If you, if, if you're working and you don't have the opportunity to come, we're going to give you every opportunity to, just like we always do, to continue to inform yourselves.
Well, and, and I'll tell you right now too, obviously, we have other business that we have to get to tonight as well, but if you have a few minutes after the meeting, I'll gladly stop and take some time. I have some paperwork here that I could show you some things too, so I can explain it to you. Uh, it is not our intention to make, uh, the, the people of this city make a decision without information, of course, and I'm happy to provide as much as I can and explain it to you more in detail.
Yeah, we, we, we cannot be distributed at school. It's against the law.
You're, you're upset with us because we're not breaking the law. We can't break the law. You said. Well, as, as board members, we can't be. About the referendum, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting for years. That's, again, you're upset with us because you didn't know. You, you needed to educate yourself on that, okay? So with that being said, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful if you're taking it that way. It's your responsibility as a parent to know what's going on within your child of the school and the school meetings and all that. That's your responsibility. I'm not gonna, I, I shouldn't have to go to every door and knock on there and say, hey, we're having a meeting tomorrow. There's a school website that posts it. We have talked about the referendum for, at this point, years because we talked about it previously when it failed last time. And we've talked about it all year this year, all year last year. We've given as much as a notice as everything that they possibly can of the referendum and of these meetings. They're publicly posted on the website. You can't, you say you work a dangerous, well, then you're not looking at it. So, you, you say you work twelve hours. I'm on the same page. I work, you work a dangerous job, so do I, but I'm here a person and when I can't be, I'm online. You have to do your part. You can't be mad at us because you're not doing your part.
Our meetings are the third Wednesday of every month at seven PM without fail. There might be one or two that are, are different, but the entire year, that's what they are.
Ms. Tauber, could you identify yourself? Because a lot of people online wouldn't know who you are.
Sure. I'm Tara Tauber. I'm an attorney with Tauber Law Offices and I have represented the school board and the district for many years.
And so like I said, I, I know we have other things we have to take care of, but like I said, if you can stick around a little bit after the meeting, I want to go over it with you and fill you in.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over back to Kripaliver.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting and those of you watching us online, thank you for watching us online. We have to do basically two meetings tonight, so let me explain what we're doing for tonight's meetings. We are going to put the school board meeting on pause for a moment because by state law, we need to do a public hearing in regards to collective bargaining, negotiating with our teachers. The teacher's contract has expired this past June, so we need to meet to renegotiate that teacher's contract in the coming months. Before we can engage in formal negotiations with the teachers, we need to have a public hearing. So we'll pause the school board meeting for that purpose at this time. I'd like to introduce to everyone this evening, Mrs. Cynthia McKnight, who serves as the president of our teachers' union, and she will join me at the table for our public hearing. Okay, we'll call the public hearing to order at this particular time. The purpose of the meeting, we will talk about and explain to everyone right now with Mrs. McKnight beginning that narrative for us.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Kripaliver and I would like to take this opportunity to, um, welcome everybody to this public hearing. The purpose of this hearing, as Dr. Kripaliver said, is for the school corporation and the teachers' association to take public testimony on the subject of teachers' bargaining. These topics do include teacher salaries, teachers' wages, and teachers' fringe benefits, which include accident, sickness, health, dental, vision, life, disability coverage, retirement, retirement benefits, and paid time off as permitted by the bargaining unit or bargaining under Indiana Code twenty twenty-eight-nine-dash-eleven.
Thank you, Mrs. McKnight. Uh, this is a time that is not a question and answer session. Rather, it is a time to provide the opportunity to our public to give input as to the topics of teacher bargaining. Anyone wishing to make a comment may stand and do so at this time. Going once. Yes? Thank you. No, I understand. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else have additional comments pertaining to collective bargaining with the teachers and the administration and school board? Going twice. Three times. All right. Thank you for coming to participate in the public hearing and we will at this time adjourn the public hearing and resume our school board meeting at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, if I may continue.
Yes, sir, please do.
We will begin the school board business at hand for this evening.
If you don't mind. I have it streaming online as well just to make sure. There are a lot of people saying that they can't hear. I don't know if there's a, a volume adjustment or something we can do. Just reading the comments, that's all.
No, I appreciate that. We'll see if we can make those adjustments so our audience can hear. So I appreciate that. Okay. We will begin with our consent agenda. This evening, under the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, financial, fiscal, extracurricular resignations, extracurricular hirings, and donations. And at this time, I would recommend to the board that they approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Dr. Kripaliver, could you read off the donations, please?
Yes, thank you. Under donations, I would like to recognize and express our sincere appreciation for the donations that are being made this evening to the varsity football program. Those donations are coming from Glass City of five hundred dollars. An anonymous donor is making a donation of six hundred twenty-four dollars ninety-three cents. Dean Orange Auto is making a donation of three hundred dollars. Luna Local eighty-one is making a donation of five hundred dollars. And Al Aluska, and I apologize if I mispronounced that name, is making a donation of one hundred dollars. And we greatly appreciate our community members and our community businesses for supporting our football program as well as our schools and our athletic programs.
Thank you, Dr. Kripaliver. Have you heard the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we pass.
Motion, have a motion to accept. We have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the items? Here you go. We'll take a vote. Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Going on to items on the personnel. I'm recommending to the board, regretfully, that we accept the resignations of the following staff members. Jessica Cammer, Title One facilitator, Suzie Daniels, Health Assistant, Robert Ashby, a fourth grade teacher, and Amelia Thurman, our band director.
It's always pleasure.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Obviously, uh, hate to see any of our teachers go. This has been a tough year for it, obviously. Um, I wish them well in their future endeavors, of course, though, um, and, uh, a- as usual, hopefully you can get things on track here and, uh, you know, get some, get some more traction in the right direction, so.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Any other discussion? Are you going to take a vote? Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Item number two, I recommend to the board that they approve to hire the following Lake Station police officers as our SROs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Those officers are James Richardson, Stephen Peak, Noah Frizzell, Angela Ruggera, Louis Flores, Luke Shaw, Daniel Perryman, Kyle Olson, Isaac Aguilar, and Jesus Alvarez.
So move.
For motion.
Second.
We have a second? Second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Take a vote, Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And you vote.
And I vote aye. I was saying, I was saying about the volume. I was like, I can ask you, is the volume better now?
They are saying it's.
Okay, great. All right. That's what my thought was. I'm sorry.
The third item under personnel, I'm recommending to the board this evening, they approve to hire the following staff members. Angela Kruger, fourth grade teacher at Bailey. Andrea De Fear, fourth grade teacher at Hamilton Elementary, and Ginger Bailey, instructional support specialist. Angela, we're putting over at Bailey.
Friend of recommendation?
So move.
Second.
Motion, and we have a second by somebody. Any discussion on the item? Take a vote, Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Item number four, I'm recommending to the board this evening that they approve to hire the following paraprofessional staff. And I'm pleased to say that these, uh, paraprofessionals that are listed this evening, with the exception of one, has been a paraprofessional in our school district, working with our students and working with our teachers. And only because of increased funding in Title One, which is a federally funded program, are we able to do this. And I'm, I'm very, very pleased to be able to bring these paraprofessionals back in our district, working in our schools. Those paraprofessionals are Stacy Jamie, Sherri Kennedy, Yvonne McLendon, Kathy Langbon, Samantha Hudak, Alexandria Day, Teresa Alcorn, and the newest paraprofessional to join that list is Chastity Martin. I recommend to the board that we approve hiring these paraprofessionals.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pass or accept.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion. The seconds, are any discussion?
Um, yeah, briefly, as, uh, Dr. Kripaliver had mentioned, um, this is as a result of Title One funding, so it is a federally funded program. Um, this is something that I mentioned a while back on social media. If you noticed any of my comments there is that we were going to look and see how many of our paraprofessionals we would be able to bring back or hire new ones based on that Title One funding, which obviously we didn't get until closer to the start of the school year. So that's why we are able to bring them back and bring someone else on. And my understanding is that we are looking for more as well because the Title One funds are there for it and we want our teachers to get as much support in the classroom as possible, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say how, how glad I am that, um, that we are hiring the paraprofessionals. They're so important in the classrooms. Um, they're basically the teacher's right, right hand and, uh, they're almost like another teacher in the classroom. I'm very glad we have them, but I'm also going to take an opportunity here to talk a little about school financing because it's very confusing. You have all different kinds of pies that you can only use money out of that pie for certain things. Title One is federal money. You can only use for Title One funds. Operational, that's our buses, our superintendents, our maintenance, a bunch of other stuff. Yeah, the educational fund, our teacher salaries and so forth. And then people ask me why we were able to redo the track. Those were federal funds, basically COVID funds that can only be used for maintenance. We could not use that for busing. So, you know, all these pieces of pots that we have of money can only be used for certain things. That's why sometimes you can hire paraprofessionals, but you can't have, get busing. So I just, I just want to make that clear, why some things get paid or hired or redone because the money comes out of different pots and you can't combine them.
And.
And there's.
And it, and if I can add to that, when you receive federal dollars from the government, if you do not use them in the way that the federal government says you must, that's just money, that's free money that's lost. And so, we had this money that was expiring and it had to be utilized by a particular date, otherwise it was just going to fly out the window. So you have to use it. You'd, you'd be silly not to, in a way that's prescribed by the federal government and is that redoing the track was one of the things that we could have used that money for.
Give the money back. We could not use it for transportation or teacher salaries or.
And for just a moment, going back to the Title One funds and, you know, partially with our paraprofessionals here, the other thing to keep in mind is that Title One funds have a few different uses that they can be used for. And by using the Title One funds for our paraprofessionals, that's kind of, we're shifting some of what we would have used it for towards bringing those people back. So it's, there's a give and take to all of this and, you know, for example, something like the referendum where it does help us fund our schools, we could, we could bring people on board with using referendum funds and that Title One money could have been used somewhere else. So that's the, the, the tug of war we're playing with the finances and where they come from and how they have to be used. So, uh, keep that in mind as well. When, when we make some of these decisions, it's about where we can use it and what we should use it on, what's going to be the most impactful. But there's always a trade-off. There's something that we could be missing out on because of the decisions we have to make to, to shore us up in one way or another.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Music. Any other comments?
Yeah, our hands, our hands are tied where we can only use money certain places. Everybody thinks it's one big pot and we just draw from that. That's not the way it works. The state's got it set up to where you've got different separate funds for different things you cannot cross.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs. Any other comments? Remember, we'll take a vote. Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Moving on to items under new business. Item number one, I'm recommending to the board this evening that they approve Board Policy 6325, titled procurement in regards to federal grants and federal funds. And I'm recommending to the board that they approve Policy 3220 dot O one, titled Teacher Appreciation Grant. And these policies are annually reviewed and annually voted upon by the board. At this, tonight, I'm recommending to the board approval of these two policies.
For the superintendent's recommendation.
So move.
Move. We have a second?
Ms. Curtis can have the move. I'll take the second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the items? Take the vote, Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
We have a facility request for the board to consider this evening, and that request is coming from the Civil Air Patrol to use Edison Junior Senior High School gym, track, and classroom on Tuesday evenings between August 27th and June 4th, 2025, from the hours of 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The Civil Air Patrol, this would be their fourth year of using our facilities here at Edison Junior Senior High School. They have been good partners and good positive relationships with the Civil Air Patrol leadership and those Civil Air Patrol cadets that have participated in that program. So at this time, I would recommend the board approval.
So move. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Take a vote, Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Curtis.
Aye.
Mr. Music.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Mr. President, that is all the business at hand for the board for this evening. I do want to announce to our audience online as well as here this evening that our next school board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 18th. Here at Edison Junior Senior High School in the community room, and that meeting will start at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Krieger. Mr. Biggs, have any parting comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Stover, for hosting us again. I need the public and the audience out there too, and on our webpage. But I need the people to understand that we're doing the best we can do with the funding that we receive. It's not like we make decisions we want to make. It's because we have to make. The state law makes you follow their order. That's all I got to say. I just want everybody to realize we're doing the best with your funds, financial money as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs. Ms. Curtis?
Yeah, excuse me. Well, Ms. York, I agree with you. It was well done. I don't know if I could get up and make those statements like you did. Tell your husband that you absolutely are on target about your concerns and you have a right to be as an employee. For parents, thank you very much for your comments. I hope we can come to some understanding about our struggle and how to communicate with you more. And, and the parameters and what we can do to help you get all the information that you need. So we've had previous comments about our Transportation 32. We've had individuals stand up and say it's not data driven. I'm telling you, a lot of work went in so that we could take our time and look as a board on our decision. It wasn't done lightly. We didn't capriciously just throw it out there to inconvenience teachers and parents. It was done for a specific reason. And I think that as a community, we'll be more knowledgeable about this vote coming up. So I appreciate the time to make that statement. And this is lovely to have people in the audience. I know it's under strenuous circumstances. It's under circumstances that I would like to have go away. But we as a community have to work these details out and we can do it. We can absolutely come in from the teachers' union perspective, administration perspective, parent perspective, and individual desires to get this resolved.
I did post it on Facebook on the Lake Station. And I didn't just invite just the school, I invited the whole city.
Okay.
It's not just about us. It's about this.
Absolutely.
Everybody in the community, so it's not just schools.
Yeah, I agree with that wholeheartedly. Thank you very much. And this gentleman hopefully will be able to answer all of the minute questions that you have. That's a little bit beyond what I've taken the time to look at. The only thing that I've looked at is the, the property tax environment of our family. But he, in his discussions, has talked about other families and other situations. So he's helping educate me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Music?
So yeah, a few things that I want to address. Obviously circling back for just a moment on why the students can't be in the classroom. So again, you know, this is partially because of, you know, the legal requirement for the notice. It's also, you know, the transportation decision in general was also made in part due to us wanting to keep as many teachers as possible. Because obviously, I mean, e-learning's hard enough as it is. Imagine e-learning with, you know, 30 or 40 kids in a classroom, you know? So that was part of it too. We wanted to keep as many teachers as possible. So that was part of the financial decision behind that as well. Once again, you know, we had to give as much notice, the two-year notice, and that's why we've kind of had to go with this hybrid situation for right now. I will reiterate, I've said this a bunch of times already before, but if the referendum is, if it passes in November, we will be getting right back to the five-day transportation as quickly as possible. Obviously, probably won't be the exact same week that the referendum passes, but within, you know, I would hope, you know, the next week or two afterwards, we'd be back to five-day transportation as quickly as possible. There is another note on transportation with, when it comes to special education students. So if their IEP requires that they receive transportation, we are required by federal law to provide it.
Have a tone with IEP students.
So I don't know as much about IEPs, but.
It's a plan, it's a plan.
It is a plan for, you know.
That's what I'm doing that we must follow.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, individual educational plans. I, I, you know, as far as that goes, there's different, different versions of an IEP. But if, if there's requires that they receive transportation, we are required by federal law to provide it. So that's part of the reason why we've had to make the adjustments on transportation as well, is because we still have to provide that transportation, even if our funding gets cut in half. And now we have to figure out how we can juggle things to make sure we're still providing those, those students that are required to have transportation, that transportation. So that was another part of it as well. Couple of other things that pop up a little bit here and there, so I wanted to mention them is I've seen a few people online that are mentioning, you know, their opposition to the referendum and such, and they don't actually pay our referendum. So I want you to make sure that you, you know, if you have a question about, you know, what school district you're in, you may be living in Lake Station, but you could be in the River Forest School District and you're paying a different referendum. So that's just kind of a general, you know, knowledge thing there. So if you have any questions about it, I'm more than happy to, to help point you in the right direction to make sure you know which referendum you're paying. Because honestly, at this point, you know, most, there's plenty of schools in the area in Lake County that have referendum in place, so it's not just here. But just so, just so you're aware of your own tax situation, if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to help, you know, point that out to you. I know sometimes it could be our school district layout between River Forest and Lake Station, it's a little bit of a weird map. So it can be a little hard to read at times, but I'm happy to help if I can. But please make sure that, you know, if, if, if you are, you know, a part of the River Forest School District, understand that you will not be paying the Lake Station referendum on top of the River Forest referendum. I've seen some concern about that as well. Other than that, Tara, Tara also mentioned that we do have these meetings every third Wednesday of the month at seven o'clock. So please make sure you, you know, catch them online. Obviously, they're on the Facebook page, so you can catch them after the fact too. So please, you know, show up or log in or watch it the next day or something like that. Also, you know, make sure that, you know, you go online and check your voter registration. You have to be registered by October 7th, I believe, to be able to vote in this election and, you know, vote in favor of the referendum ideally. We really want to get back to normal for these kids. It's what they deserve. And that's what we're here to do is, you know, provide the best learning opportunities and experience for the kid, for the kids, so. Please, you know, again, if you catch me online or something like that, you know, you can always ask a question and I'll do my best to answer. And then, like I said, if you want to stick around for a few minutes, I would be happy to explain some things and help you out with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Don, thanks for hosting us and everybody in attendance and online. Thank you for joining us. As it was stated earlier, you know, it's for the whole community. That is absolutely right. I would love to have to move these meetings to a much larger room. I'd love to have to have it in the auditorium. I'd love to see hundreds of people here asking us these questions. They're, they're great questions to be asked. So I think everybody up here is for that. The donators, I just want to send a special shout out to you guys. Thank you so much for donating to our, I believe it's the football team, correct? Our football team. Welcome to the new teachers and staff that we have and welcome back Civil Air Patrol. It's awesome to see you guys in. Ms. York, that is correct, right? Thank you for your comments. It takes a lot to stand up in front of a room and in front of a community and, and speak your mind. I agree. It's not easy. It's not fun. And when we all had to vote on this, we were we all had the same thing in our head. And I apologize that it puts you in a hard spot. I really do. I wish there was a, an easier answer. Unfortunately, with everything that was thrown at us at that time, this is just what was decided was the best option. Was it a good option? No. It was just the best option at the time. So I apologize that your job is not as fun or as easy or as awarding as it should be. And I hope it gets easier for you. Effective as well. Yes, absolutely. Again, I just want to jump back a little bit. I know it's almost like a a record here, but the referendum has been talked about for years. If, if you don't or haven't heard us talking about the referendum in the last two years, you haven't done your part. We talk about it every meeting. It's online, plastered everywhere. It's on Facebook, plastered everywhere. Our board members are active on Facebook. We comment back as much as we can, excuse me, as much as we can. So to say that we haven't put the information out there, it's not true. We have to do our part as a community. It's not just people who are in this, in the school as a community, to make our community that we live in the best community possible. And everybody will tell you, when you go to move to a community, one of the first things you look at are the schools. Strong schools make a strong community. A well-funded school is gonna make a strong school. The referendum will put us back into that position of being a well-funded school. The state continuously and year after year, they come to us with cuts here and cuts there, and it's like, again, like, like Mr. Music said, we are not the only school on a referendum. There are, Mr. Kripler, are you aware of how many, just in our area? Or low, I mean, numbers, I mean, I, I don't know even know if that's a number you could know, to be honest with you. There's a lot. There's a lot of schools that are on referendum. Our, our neighbor schools, River Forest, they're on a referendum. Like, it's, it's, it's a common thing now. And unfortunately, it has to be common because that's the only way schools are being funded anymore. So please come out to our meetings, come out to, we're gonna have special meetings like it was mentioned earlier that are going to be speaking just facts and educate people on just a referendum. September and October, we're gonna have quite a few. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, again, that'll be posted on the website. We cannot send it home with your kids. Cannot do that. Oh, ma'am, I am, I apologize if you think I'm bashing you. Okay, I am not. It, it was mentioned to send the information home with the children. I was just reminding that we cannot do that. If somebody, you're fine.
For the problem when it comes to everybody getting the information properly.
And I understand that, but there's, there's parameters. We have to, the only reason I was mentioning that again was not personal to anybody. But if somebody heard that online earlier saying send it home with the kids and they did not hear that we cannot do that, that's all that this is for. There are more people than just this room right now that are, that are in attendance of this meeting. If anybody thinks we can send this information home to your children, we cannot do that. Please come out, support your schools, support your community, and let's grow as a whole. That is all I have.
Thank you very much, guys. It's my turn. Just the, the whole thing about the two-year busing, we have to give two years notice before we can stop busing, okay? We did it two years ago, just in case referendum failed, and unfortunately it did. So it's not like we really planned for it or wanted it, but we knew we would not have the money if the referendum failed. So we actually did a due diligence in a way two years ago and said, hey, if that referendum fails, we will not have the money for busing. See, I remember I throw you under the bus for a minute or ask you a hard question. Hopefully you know the answer. You don't, just tell me. So our, we have four, basically three budgets, right? We got title funds, we have an education budget and operating fund. The operating fund is our administrative staff's salaries and benefits, our, our maintenance, our custodians.
Mr. President, if I could interrupt and answer that question.
Cause I'm probably doing something wrong.
No, you're doing fine. The operation fund and, and, and in the title of its name is really what it is, and operates the schools. And that's the fund that we're asking for a referendum to help support. And that operating fund pays for transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, capital improvements, repairs and maintenance, the school administration center, the business office, human resources, custodial staff, maintenance and grounds, utility bills, NIPSCO water bill, property, fleet and liability insurance for the school district and for the school board. And those are the only things that can be paid out of the operation fund. That also is the only fund that is property or property tax supported. So when we talk about the education fund, there is no property taxes that you pay that go into the education fund. That fund is 100% supported by the state of Indiana. The operations fund, that's supported by local property taxes. And that's the fund that due to circuit breakers, property tax credits to the tax creditor or to the taxpayer, it's the same thing, just different terminology, and to the 1%, 2% and 3% increases in your net assessed evaluation. All of those come into play in funding the operations fund. And that's why we need an operating referendum to help supplement that fund. It's not a windfall. It's not extra money. It's simply replacing money that the state has taken away from the schools. And the majority of our school districts in Northwest Indiana have operating referendums. Chesterton has two of them. Munster has more than three referendums. Communities in our central part of our state that are considered affluent communities such as Fishers, Hamilton Southeastern School District, they ran a referendum for the very first time last year. Carmel, a very affluent community, as one is considered it, they ran a referendum last year. So it isn't just small school districts or tiny districts. It isn't based on poverty or enrollment or can city size. It's simply how the state has chosen to fund public schools. And I'll be the one to tell you, it's inadequate and it's unfair.
Well, Dr. Krieger, I could have said better myself, by the way, but. But, damn it, the question I was getting back to is. But Tammy, the question I was getting back to is, so we, but when the money comes in, this is your education fund, this is your operating funds. What have we been receiving the last couple of years in our operating fund that we get from the state? Approximately, I mean, don't even hold it to the penny here. This is for approximation, please.
Well, the last six years of our referendum, our entire tax levy, which is dollars we receive in the operating fund are, are taken up by the circuit breaker. Meaning we receive zero property tax dollars in our operating fund. For six years. So the referendum, that fifty-four cents per one hundred dollars net assessed value was chosen specifically to subsidize that exact amount that we lose in our tax levy in the operating fund.
So we get zero? I thought it was.
We received zero.
Property tax. But how much do you actually get almost per year in our operating fund from the excise and some other things?
There's excise, there's a.
Approximately. I know one year was a hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Depends, but anywhere from one hundred thousand to about three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Our operating budget is three point two million dollars. That's what we need to run it. So what we normally do is we take fifteen percent out of the education fund because we're allowed to do that, not a penny more. We put it in the operating fund, referendum fund, referendum money. We put them together and that's our three point two million dollars that we need to run the operating. Without that, we're expected to do it with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make a three point two million dollar operation fund work. That's what we're dealing with. I just want to explain that to you, that, that's how difficult it is. And I hate that we have to take fifteen out of the education fund. That should be more for our teachers and, and so forth. But that's where the facts are. That's, that's what we have to do. If we had more funding from the state, we wouldn't have to do that. That, the education fund would have all that money and our operation fund would be fully funded by the state, but it is not. That's just the fact of it. And, uh, we're trying to do the best we can with that. So, Mr. York, I thank you for your comments. Is my grandkid in your class? Yes, he is. I, I've seen some of your classes. You're, you do very well. And as somebody knows, I have four kids at home e-learning. So, again, I have some skin again, they call it. Four kids and I'm usually watching two younger kids. So it's, it's, it's cat house. I want this over as much as anybody in the public. I, four kids, e-learning, it's, it's, it's rough. Good news is, you do the math, I think there's only twenty e-learning days if this passes. So, believe me, I know it's rough. I know it's rough on everybody. It's rough on me too. And I have to support it because you hear the numbers. There, there just really wasn't any other option for us. And, you know, again, that's why we did the whole two years ago. If the referendum passed, we, we won't, how we're going to do busing. We just can't. I, of course, just not there. So, um, but anyway, um. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. No matter, it comes back to what Kevin was trying to talk about the law. If we, if we allow that, then technically we're not busing them. So technically somebody could sue us and saying, they're, they're able to go, go copy up my kids. Oh, you're not busing them. If we allow, we allow some to come, then we, we, we could get sued for not busing kids because you were in school learning and they have e-learned because we wouldn't bus them. And then we get sued. I know, it's confused. I know, I, yeah.
Just got to be fair for us to divorce all, all the students.
So, but, um, the referendum is coming. Uh, we, we're getting the campaign mobilized and, uh, there will be a lot of information forthcoming and I sure hope everybody will, uh, support it because you see the numbers. And there are people out there who will put misinformation on the internet like they really know what they're talking about, and they don't. I really wish they'd come here and ask questions, but they don't. Um, so I'll leave that to somebody else to discuss. Um, the other thing I want to mention is that we're still providing breakfast and lunch.
That's for the, you know, parents that have kids that need to be fed. If they don't have money to pay for food, then they don't have money to get the gas.
Uh, maybe, I understand. I understand. Some, some are walkers, some aren't. I, I get it. But yeah, I know, it's, it's not perfect. It's definitely.
You know, there's a lot, um, a lot that I'm concerned about. This is a, me, a resident of Lake Station. And it's not, you know, I'm grandma, I'm not.
Me too.
I have my grandparents. So it's another level. So for me not to be involved, I've been involved, but in different districts. You know, because my kids are there during their thirties. You know, so I'm, got my grandkids, you know, for things that I don't want them for, but they're here.
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
And it's, it's, it's reality for all of us and, you know.
For those who can't do it though, they are still serving lunch and breakfast. There's no in-school learning, but Tuesdays and Thursdays. They're more than welcome to go to the schools. They, they are serving lunch and breakfast every day. So, um, that may help a little bit for ones who can't do it on time, but can't.
Um, and by the way, you can go to any school. So if you have an Edison student live in the Hamilton district or the Bailey district, that Edison student can go to Bailey or Hamilton and have breakfast or for lunch. Yes, they have to eat it here. Well, good question. And we're trying to work with the state to see if we can do some other things to make it a little bit easier for our parents.
Hey, well, that's pretty much all I have. And thank you for coming. It was really great to see everybody here. I wish, wish you had more participation like this. You know, we only get participation when it hits the fan. So, you know, that's when they come. So, I don't know, but that's the way, that's the way it works. Um. Mr. Tom, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't usually, but I do today. Um, as Dr. Kripliver and some of the board members have said, our schools in Indiana are grossly underfunded. And they're underfunded because of our lawmakers and things that are going on downstate. Which make referendums necessary, unfortunately, in this day and age. And the only thing that I can tell you is, if you don't like seeing districts in this position, vote for different lawmakers. And that's the only option that we have. Lake Station is one of the hardest-hit communities in the entire state in terms of underfunding because of the circuit breaker. And so you have a double whammy here because not only are you just underfunded like the rest of the state, but it's worse for you because of this circuit breaker and, and the tax situation. So that has drastically affected your community. Um, I can tell you that there isn't a single person sitting up here that isn't going to bend over backwards to answer any question that any person in the community has about this referendum. This is so very important. And if you ask Mr. Tenorio a question and he doesn't know the answer, I guarantee you, he will ask somebody else and get the answer for you. And that's going to go for anybody that's sitting up here. Uh, there are a lot of legalities in terms of how we were even able to run this referendum this year. Because we had a failed referendum last year, our lawmakers have said, you're not allowed to run them back to back. However, there is a way that you can, uh, petition the state to be able to run them back to back. And that is what we did. It took a lot of hard work. It took a lot of, uh, feet on the ground, a lot of people getting signatures, a lot of people, um, getting the petitions together, working with the election board. When I'm telling you this took months and months of work to be able to get to this point this year, it did. It took Dr. Kripliver and myself working with the election board. I have worked directly with the Indiana Department of Education. I have worked directly with the Department of, uh, Local Government Finance. Um, we, we have done all these things to be able to meet every deadline that needed to be met in order to place this on the ballot. And, and that is what we did. If anybody has a question about any of those procedures, you can feel free to contact me directly. My office number is two one nine eight six five sixty-six sixty-six. I will be happy to answer any question that you have regarding the statute and how we were able to run this. Um, but we have gotten approvals from every state agency that we needed approvals for, and we've met those deadlines. So if there are any other questions in that regard, please feel free to an- to ask us and we will be happy to answer them. I know that there has been a lot of misinformation on social media. I have seen some of it. Um, and again, any questions that you have, whether it be Mr. Treywick or anyone else that has a question, please feel free to contact myself or anyone else up here for the correct information. We'll be happy to give it to you. Also, I just want to reiterate that, like Mr. Tenorio said, not every taxpayer in Lake Station is going to be affected by this particular referendum. If you live in River Forest districts, you're paying River Forest referendum taxes, not ours. And I know that years ago, when this referendum was first run. And this board made up of some different folks at the time, some the same. They sat down and they decided upon what kind of a tax burden to try and ask you taxpayers for in order to properly fund our schools. And this was not a situation back then where they said, let's ask for all kinds of money to run, to have a windfall in Lake Station. That, that was not the case here. It was at the time, what can we get by on? What can we get by on that is not going to overly burden the taxpayers? And that was the rate that they went with at the time. Since then, I will tell you, Lake Station has lost more funding over the years, based upon certain decisions that have been made downstate that have affected us. Lake Station did not now go back to the taxpayers and say, because we lost money, we need you to pay more. They do need you to pay more. That's the reality. They do. But they're not asking you to pay more because they know that you're hurting too. Everybody is hurting right now. And so they're going to get by or trying to get by just to have you pay the same. The same amount that you've paid and been paying over the past seven years or however much it's been. Is that going to be a hardship for the schools even still? Yes. But they will, they will make it up somehow. They'll figure it out. Okay, for some people, we've been talking about, this is going to, I think you may be paying seven dollars a month. Some may be paying fourteen dollars a month. You're paying that now and they're asking you to continue paying that. Okay, that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about hundreds of dollars a month. We're talking about, in, in many cases, seven dollars, fourteen dollars a month, just to keep your schools operational. And I, and so I hope that as people on, online, as people in the community are talking about this. You folks that are listening are asking, they're asking the questions. You're getting the information from us. You're writing it down. You're, you're telling people in the community who are saying things that are not true. No, you have the wrong information. That's not what it is. That's not the truth. Because the consequence of you not passing this referendum is going to be horrific for your community. It, in, in comparison to the amount that it's really affecting your pocketbook right now. And that's what they're asking you to continue. And, and, and so just to reiterate, please, reach out to anybody up here at any time. We'll get, if we don't have the information that you need, we'll get it for you. Because it means that much to everybody sitting up here to ha- to have you have the right information. So that this can be successful for your kids and for your community. Thank you.
I know it's been a long night. I got one more thing I want to say before we go ahead. Well, when Mr. Tom was talking about the people downstate making laws that change everything. The question that's going to be on the ballot is so misleading, and I think the legislators downstate do that on purpose. I truly don't believe, I don't believe they, they want public education. They want charter schools. The question on the ballot is going to make it seem like we're raising your property taxes sixty-five percent? And it's not. They're going to say exactly the same. The question is worded very strangely. And I think they do want to do that on purpose. They don't want us to, to do well. So, uh, when we get our information out there, please look at it on, on what the question is actually stating. Because it sounds like we're going to raise your property taxes sixty-five percent. It is not true. It's going to say exactly the same. As long as your house assessed value stays the same, you're going to pay the exact same thing you're paying today if it passes. Now, they come back and say, oh, your house was worth a hundred thousand, it's worth two hundred thousand now. It will go up some, but that's just because of the private tax, not because of the referendum. So, so make sure everyone understands that. It's been a long night. Anybody else say, uh, Ms. Pippa? Uh, sure.
Uh, we lost that last referendum by fourteen votes. Uh, somehow you guys figured it was not even fourteen votes. And then all this is because of fourteen votes or less. And the thing is now, since we lost that rest referendum last November, this coming November, if we win, we have to share with char- charter schools. That's your lawmakers. That's what they decided. We have no choice. I just want that to be out there. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Uh, my microphone's a little louder, obviously, than everybody else's, or I'm just a loudmouth, one of the two. First, I want to, to thank the parent guardian for coming in, the grandma for coming in and, and expressing yourself. I think you provided an opportunity for a lot of, uh, good information to be brought out to everyone. And, uh, I appreciate your passion. So, no, I just don't apologize. I think it's, it's fantastic. You, you're speaking from the heart. And, and we all appreciate that. So, thank you for being here and, and, and voicing your opinion. Um, I appreciate all of you being here and, and for expressing your concerns and, um, the heartache. I know teachers have it rough. I, I understand that, especially, um, for little ones. I was high school math. That's a heck of a lot easier than a five-year-old. So, thank you for all you do every day. Um, whether we're online or in person, I appreciate you. With that, eh, eh, so much great information has been given out this evening. Uh, we are going to be having open forums where you can come in and ask questions. Um, like I've said from the very beginning, please, please learn about the process. Understand what's happening so that you can make an informed decision for your family. Uh, I, I don't have an issue with anyone who disagrees with what I may feel is what's in the best interest for our children. As long as you're making that based on facts and not misleading information. Please take the time to, to gain all the information that's available to you. Ask all the questions. I have yet to ha- have people come to me and ask me. Uh, I, I'm available. Dr. Kripliver is available. All the board members are available. Our attorney is available. And eh, anytime that works for your schedule. Eh, you can call and leave a message and we'll call you on the weekends. We'll call you in the evenings. I, I will make myself available whenever I possibly can for you. Because I want to make sure you have all the proper information to make the best decision for your family. I appreciate you being here. I hope more people show up and ask. When we have the forums, please come out and ask the questions. Thank you.
Dr. Kripliver, the final word?
Yes, please, if I may. Continuing, uh, to share very quickly additional information on the referendum. Uh, Ms. Pippa is correct. We are going to have public forums and they will be starting in September after the Labor Day holiday. And that will be a time where we will share information, answer your questions, repeat information, whatever it takes. We will be there to help you because, as she said, we want you to make decisions based on fact, not based on rumor or, uh, missteps in what people are saying. We also are setting up a website for people to use. That website is under construction as I speak to you this evening. So as soon as that is up and running, we will make that available to you. So look at social media, Facebook pages. We can't, uh, we'll use our personal Facebook accounts and social media accounts to get that information out to you. Also, on the webpage that we are setting up. Also, on the webpage that we are setting up, there will be a frequently asked questions. Where people will be able to write their question and we will respond and, and provide the answers to those questions. And in so doing, uh, as. Ms. Talbot answered one of the questions for Mr. Treywick this evening. That was a good question and I'm glad he asked that. And I'm glad we were able to provide the answer to that question this evening. His second part to that question was, since we are only busing three days a week. Is there a savings that the school district is seeing from transportation? And if so. What are we using that savings for? Well, the answer is yes, we will be seeing a savings. We have calculated and recalculated and will recalculate again. As to what that savings amount is. But uh, there will be a savings because we're busing three days a week. And those savings will be put back into the operation fund. To be used for those operating expenses. Uh, we still, a, as you've heard tonight, we are still under legal obligation. To bus our special needs students that have. Transportation as a related service in their individual educational plans, I E P. So much of the savings that we will see, we will need to make sure that we can continue to provide the funding that by law we are required to do. Please ask your questions. There's no such thing as a bad question. We want to answer them. Finally tonight, I want to end my comments by reminding everybody that this Friday, August twenty-third is our first home football game. And it is against South Newton here at Edison, starting at seven PM. And prior to the game, there will be a tailgate party in the school parking lot, starting at five o'clock. And going until the time that the game starts. So you're, you're welcome to participate in that activity. And my last announcement, the girls varsity volleyball team will be participating in the Hobart invite this Saturday, the twenty-fourth. At Hobart High School, starting at nine o'clock. So we want to wish our student athletes much success and good luck in their athletic competitions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Kripler. I'd like to thank everybody for sticking along for this, one of our longest board meetings this year, so thank you for sticking it out.